Okay, thank you so much. We will now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board and subject matters within the board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda. The only action we may take is a referral to the CIO. Under board rules, speakers can speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication. That would be either at today's general legislative session or tomorrow's land use legislative session, but not both. To better facilitate the meeting for non-agenda public comment, we have five speakers in person and five speakers by phone. To ensure fairness, the first five speakers for a non-agenda public comment are now randomly selected, and the remainder will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion item with 10 or more speakers, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion at the chair's discretion. A reminder that according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will receive the twice-deal out of time for their comments. And a final reminder, according to the board's rules of procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given one warning, and after that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Andrew, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 24 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, 11 in person and 13 requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, and we'll now randomly select the first five speakers in person. All the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite for the first five individuals Pam, Michael Brando, William Perno, Sylvia Irigoyan, and Caesar Javier. If I've called your name, please go forward. You're welcome to come forward in any order.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is William Perno. I am a senior prevention specialist with C.A. San Diego. Much of my work involves training the community regarding the risks from fentanyl and opioids, how to recognize an opioid overdose, and how to use Narcan or naloxone to try and reverse the opioid overdose. We recently thanked the Metropolitan Transit System for their efforts to have approximately 200 intercon security guards under contract with MTS trained and equipped with Narcan nasal spray. Narcan saves lives, and the sooner it can be used on a person suffering from an opioid overdose, the better. All emergency medical services will arrive as soon as possible. Those first few minutes of care before EMS arrives are very important. A security guard may be the first person to observe an overdose. Naloxone is easy to use, and a person can be trained in just 11 minutes. CPR is also a critical skill to know and utilize as opioids kill by slowing and stopping a person's breathing. I would like to note there are other government agencies that have private security guard companies under contract to provide security at local government buildings open to the public within the county of San Diego and incorporated cities. It would be wonderful if these private security guard companies, including intercon, under additional government contracts, ensure their employees are CPR-trained and equipped with Narcan or naloxone nasal spray. I hope these security guard companies will take these minimal steps voluntarily and upon the request of the appropriate local government agency. These conditions could also be added to existing contracts when the contracts are open for modifications or renewal. I hope intercon will lead the way and encourage other security guard companies in San Diego to follow. C.A. San Diego can provide the naloxone training and equip security guards with naloxone nasal spray at no cost. I will leave additional information and my contact information with you today. I hope other governments will follow the lead of MTS. Naloxone saves lives. Thank you for your time. And just a personal note, that naloxone is coming through the county of San Diego naloxone distribution program or the state of California, so thank you for that as well.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Sylvia Irigoyan. I've been living in Chula Vista pretty much all my life. I lost my daughter to a fentanyl overdose in September. She tried to get help, but there was no help for her. It was during COVID, so all these programs were closed. She just got worse. She left us three kids to raise, and I'm just asking for you to help with these programs. They're not being done right. McCallister would tell me she has to hit rock bottom. There is no rock bottom with fentanyl. She was found in a tent overlooking the Gaylord Resort. I didn't get a police report. I didn't even know where she was found dead because the police never did a report. So I didn't know. I had to go out there with my husband and ask the people in the streets where she was found. That wasn't fair. That put us in danger. The police just kept telling us, "We don't know nothing." I've tried to help her. She tried to help herself, and there was nothing. There was no real help. A lot of people are dying out there. A lot of people have families that still love them no matter what. They want them back. But we just need to do something so people stop dying, and that will help the homeless population. We shouldn't have a problem if these programs work like they're supposed to. What they put on paper is not what they're doing in the facilities. I've helped more people get into shelters and get into programs after my daughter died. If I knew what I knew then, what I know now, I could have probably saved her, but I didn't know because it's not out there. You have to search. You have to ask. You have to beg. I've been to the mayor's office. I've been to meetings with behavioral health. We shouldn't have to do this to poor kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
During COVID, it seems like all of you were here except for Paloma.
Can you please state your name?
Too bad that happened. Pam. All right. Paloma, welcome to the jungle. Interesting, you claim to have been active for clean water, and that's why you sought office and you were a community activist. But the Tijuana sewage system crisis isn't resolved, is it? Did you bring that toxicity with you to this toxic chambers? Hopefully not. I'm not in District 1, but it is concerning to hear you don't represent the people but represent the unions, stakeholders, and the progressive agenda. Also of concern are your unpaid property taxes, penalties, unpaid credit cards, and other debts. Now you've been told you are qualified to help manage the county's $8.4 billion budget. Perhaps with your first paycheck as supervisor, you will set an example as a responsible adult and pay off your debts. It is obvious the alliance between Tara and Paloma grants an automatic two votes for their agenda items and their pet peeves. This can be dangerous to the other three board members if you're not in their alliance because all you'll need is one other vote to sink your items unless you bargain or concede to the alliance further votes. Perhaps, Paloma, since you hired Nathan's chief of staff, you shouldn't throw your name in the ring to be chair, as there is a curse on the first year in that seat resulting in early resignation.
Next speaker, please. And Caesar, you're the only speaker that I called.
I've been resuming with the clerk, sir, and she agreed, and she inputted it.
That's correct. I called your name and did not call your wife's name yet. So you're welcome to come forward and provide your comments.
I beg to...
Your wife is requested to speak, but I called the first five speakers, and she was not part of the first five.
Who will now speak?
Caesar Javier, you may begin, yes.
Rarity that we have public like us representing our vulnerable, underserved community. The political virus has spread heavy and fast from the core city we call the finest city, San Diego. Corruption. My assignment to you, like a daughter, is please read the Constitution. Just the three: value analysis, domestic tranquility, establishment of just society, meaning justice, and public welfare. If you could memorize that even in your dreams, please do something about it. The failure of the Juana Rivera artists, political pollutants, stiff from District 4, city of San Diego, the former councillor, now the one that succeeded is a civil rights Density, you know this, ma'am. You are like sardines manufacturing human beings. Who are these actors? Councillor Rivera, member of the Air Pollution Governing Board, including Air Commission Representative Reamer. That is a noble and respectable meeting, ma'am. Why do you have to bring your kid in this service? As a member of the... Excuse me, my voice is like a substitute teacher. Mystic Smile Air Governing Board, smiling is not...
Thank you. Final call for Michael Brando. Not seeing Michael. I'll go ahead and call the fifth speaker that is on the list, the sixth person, Truth.
Good afternoon.
Purita Javier, we'll call you this afternoon. Ma'am.
Ma'am, ma'am, you can go ahead and stop her time.
Yeah.
She is now dementia.
Hi, it's Truth. One of the reasons why we have corrupt people in office, several political unions have reported who've been operating as a slumlord funneling their big profits to their political candidate minions. From an I News source article entitled "How Affordable Housing in National City Became a Cash Machine for San Diego County Labor Unions," quote, "A national city lies a 450-unit apartment complex where tenants have for years complained about water damage, mold, roaches, and poor management. For more than a decade, the apartment complex has served as a cash machine for a coalition of labor unions known as the San Diego County Building and Construction Trades Council. 5.2 million every year in untaxed rent and laundry payments with political action committees that channel payments into various political causes. Union leaders have used revenues from the apartment complex to give hundreds of thousands of dollars to support Todd Gloria and Catherine Blakespir, to pass bond measures, fight a repeal of the state's gas tax, donate to Alliance San Diego and the San Diego County Democratic Party. The National City Park Gardens and the Progressive Labor Alliance PAC, both of which are controlled by CEO/Business Manager/Treasurer Carol Kim, paid $202,000 a year, donated $20,000 to a pro-Paloma Geary committee. Carol Kim, Matthew Leba-Gonzalez, Ansermio Estrada, and Tom Lemon donated a total of $1,500 to a Geary's campaign. The case Citizens United overturned campaign finance law that barred unions and nonprofits from independent expenditures in elections," end quote. There's tons more to that story, but obviously we've had political unions infiltrating our local government with outright corruption to make themselves rich via paying for minion candidates. All engaged in this will be exposed, I can guarantee that. Here's Paloma with an unpermitted event, and IBW with those who paid for her seat. IBW, UDW, SIU Building Trades Council, Carol Kim, and Privileged Paloma. Doesn't the city ordinance say something like more than 24 people requires a permit? That's a seat, you're in, not a throne, wannabe king. The first day here has to be tough.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, in accordance with the board's rules, we'll hear from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, it will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We'll begin with our first caller.
Good morning. Paul Boldt, I'm not quite ready to do non-agenda. Can you call me next or something? Thanks.
Paul, we're going to keep your time going. Paul, we're going to keep your time going. You have your opportunity to speak at this time, so please go ahead.
Okay, well, you know, some problems keep going. The county council, of course, is one of them, but she'll get hers tomorrow, I guess. And, you know, the board has repeatedly violated Brown Act, calling out speakers for, you know, things they haven't really done or things that allow the board has done. Things like interstitial motions suddenly, which was kind of unrelated to the topic, but they introduced it right at the meeting, so no one got a chance to prepare or anything. Fortunately, it was voted down. And, you know, some of the motions I've seen have violated due process or free speech. Fortunately, again, votes got... All of them got voted down. So, you know, it's kind of tough for it to head, but that's another reason you should not be hasty, examine all the documents, double-check them.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Consuelo. And if Sylvia is still in the chambers, this is David's cousin, Sylvia, and I am so sorry I have mentioned your, you know, the passing of Elizabeth in some board meetings, but guess what? These people do not work for us. They're the reasons why these kinds of situations happen. They're the reasons why people are struggling. And with that being said, I'm going to continue with my speech that I have written, and it says, "If people still believe these boards work for the public, just look at the pattern. Residents show up in droves, informed, passionate, pleading, and still the decisions are already made, whether it's development, zoning, surveillance, homelessness, drug use, infrastructure. The public voice is treated as a formality, not a factor. What we witnessed today, it was a show. It was a performance. The swearing-in ceremony was treated like a pep rally, chants, cheers. But ask those who were cheering what this board actually does. Most couldn't tell you. And once the celebration ends, they leave while the real decisions, the ones that impact their daily lives, are made quietly behind a wall of bureaucratic bullshit language, rubber stamped by people they didn't elect. And let's not pretend this board represents the will of the people. Time and time again, the public shows up, and again, they're just treated as a piece of nothing. You know, this is the goal. It's not to uplift humanity, not to uplift our county, but to implement a global framework, piece by piece, through housing policies, zoning changes, 5G infrastructure, and so-called resilience plans. Here in San Diego County, we're watching the show. We're watching the slow, deliberate breakdown of our community. Projects are...
Thank you. Now I hear from the next caller.
My name is Kathleen Lippett, and I am concerned about the board's decision whether or not how they choose a chair. Last time, 2021, they chose Nathan Fletcher. That was in contrast to their previous process of choosing a...
Thank you. Please pause your time. This item is on the agenda. This is currently the consent, so, sorry. Sorry, the non-agenda public comment. So if you can pause this comment to the appropriate agenda item, and you can have your time then. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to comment on how Supervisor Desmond was removed from very important committees simply for political reasons.
Ma'am, this is your second warning. There's an item on boards and committees that's coming. It's next. So you can comment on that, on the appropriate item on the agenda. So this is our non-agenda public comment.
So it's still going to be on the agenda? I thought that you had already... All right. Should I call back?
Yes, when the item comes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hello, this is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator and an advocate for reducing the use of plastic, especially single-use plastics. Plastic products break down into microplastics that contaminate waterways, oceans, ecosystems, and even the air we breathe. Microplastics invade our bodies and brains and those of our fellow living creatures, including those we rely on for our food supply. Single-use vaping devices are responsible for a significant amount of plastic waste and other environmental toxins such as lithium-ion batteries that can cause explosions, fires, and leach-heavy metals. E-liquids also have been found to contain dangerous levels of lead. For these reasons, single-use vaping devices and their component parts are classified as hazardous waste, whether they contain nicotine or marijuana. Most people are unaware of the proper way to dispose of these devices. Manufacturers do not provide guidance or take responsibility for the disposal of their product's waste, and most of it ends up in regular trash bins or littered. There is no safe or convenient way to dispose of them. It's estimated that over 1 billion pieces of plastic vape waste is created each year. The sale of flavored tobacco products has been banned by local and state law. However, they remain widely available. I ask for stronger enforcement of the law accompanied by meaningful penalties, more than just an educational letter or repeated warnings. In addition, I ask for a ban on the sale of single-use marijuana vaping devices for the same reasons. We must do more to prevent our planet from drowning in plastic and toxic waste. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes our requests for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Okay, thank you so much. We now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda. That's... Oh, apologies. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the maintenance and statements of proceedings for the session of June 24th and June 25th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second, one of the two.
We have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, a second by Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp. They said tie... What is that? You say... Jinx, you owe me a Coke. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Yes? Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we proceed with the formation of the consent agenda. That's items 1 through 5. All items on consent are routine, and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the consent agenda after the supervisors pull the items they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion of comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Supervisor Geary.
I'd like to pull item 4.
Okay, we have item 4 will be pulled. Supervisor Anderson.
None at this time.
Nothing to pull? No comments? Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp?
No need to pull. I will move the remainder of the consent agenda.
Supervisor Desmond?
Nothing to pull or talk about. Second emotion.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp and a second by Supervisor Desmond. We now turn to public comment. And as a reminder, for speakers, your comments must be related to those items on the consent agenda only.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 15 requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, five in person, and 10 requesting to speak by phone. As a reminder, item 4 was pulled from the consent agenda for discussion. Any individuals that requested to speak on item 4, your comments will be heard when the board discusses that item. Any individuals that requested to speak on the remaining items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. Also, as a reminder, when speaking, please identify which items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. I'd like to invite for the following individuals: Caesar Javier, Mark, Pam, and Truth. If I've called your name, please go forward.
Stay with me. Caesar and Purita Javier. Point of clarification. Consent agenda is 2, 3, 4, 5. Is that correct?
2, 3, and 5. Item 4 was pulled for discussion.
Well, number 2. This particular agency is a failure. Decommission it. Experience. We petition the city. Corrupt city officials. Corrupt city officials. They did not do anything. Decommission. County jury office. You're spending money, so much money. Number three, it's not only on ensuring a good salary for our employees. Their intelligences should be foremost, including the unseen, unfelt patriotism. Those two. Intelligence, so he could do solving problems. And then we raised a quality salary. On number four or five, sir?
Four was pulled for discussion, so the next item on consent is five. Is on consent.
Okay. Communication received. You see, we ardently participated here since. And you have electronic way to manage such public participation. I could only input myself on non-agenda, when in fact I have my wife consistently. I told you, this should be heavy participation. The public, look, you are not there without us. We are the government.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay. Number three is a no. And what was, oh, communications received. I just wanted to point out and thank, uh, Mr. Anderson's office because as of yesterday afternoon, the link for e-comment on agenda was not as it should be, so communications could not have been received. So your office helped correct that with the clerk of the chambers, so, anyway, that's it.
Next speaker, please. Truth or Mark?
Hey, Truth, you know, there's so many clips I could have brought to play. Uh, item two, to stop fires, why aren't the useless grand jury offer solutions? Like getting rid of toxic fire-prone EVs, to quit building matchbox stack-it packs, to build homes made of fire-resistant bricks or maybe of plastic trash bins, to build water containers upon mountain tops, or maybe holding the failed California Insurance Commissioner responsible. Item three, it says one-time lump sum payments are contingent about a change to the county's reserve policy, which provides additional one-time funds. So is this an admission that these political unions can only be paid 14.4 million of our tax dollars if Paloma's here to vote in favor of raiding our reserves, our emergency savings, rather than properly balancing the budget of our money? But, you know, I guess we can't expect someone who can't even pay her property taxes on the house in the city she skipped out on to do that, something so basic as paying your bills. Guess you have to be responsible. But, I mean, what, what else can we expect if the unions are the ones that got you in office, paid for you to be here, practically wrote your speech you gave earlier? Well, then, why would you not give them, you know, a little bribe, a kickback for making sure that happened? It's very corrupt, what goes on here. I mean, it's nothing new, right? I'm taking my time because my speech got cut in half and I didn't have two minutes anyways. But it's just amazing. We look at what's going on, like, who are you really representing? Because it's not IB. It never was. And I don't like to say that. That's something I figured out. And it really didn't take that long. There were a lot of hints. And then it became full-blown obvious when you started running. I mean, let's just be real. Shouldn't it even say hi to the IB council members that attended today? Pretty sad. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mark, uh, speaking on two. Your equity impact statement says, "To ensure the best interests of San Diego County residents are being served." That's just a ridiculous joke. This board constantly does Agenda 21, uh, UN Agenda 21 goals, um, as do most of the county governments. Later on, I'll go into more detail on that, on number seven, with, uh, the people that are being appointed to, uh, different positions to serve the UN, not us. Uh, if you don't think that this government's corrupt, you need to see some of these videos. This is on YouTube, uh, to understand the banking system and what a total scam it is, which causes inflation intentionally. See this from six minutes, 40 seconds to 24 minutes. Corporation Nation, uh, you, you could get a taste of this at three and a half hours. Watch that for about 20 minutes. That'll blow your mind. Rosa Corey, uh, you'll want to see this starting at three minutes and 40 seconds. Here are some times for the Rosa Corey video. There's four different sections. This, these times will make it a little easier to go to some important parts right away. Uh, not everyone does Agenda 21. There are joint resolutions against it. Many different states have outlawed doing, uh, different aspects of it. Also, on, uh, four, it, what a joke. Jim was right. You need to force Mexico through trade or any means necessary, and UNEP's so-called leaders will not do it, Tara. Although, if you're going to sue them, you, why didn't you sue them long ago? And why hasn't it worked? They're just, now the pollution has reached all the way up through Coronado, which is a ritzy area. I'm sure the people at the Hotel Dell are really pissed off, and it's going to keep spreading. You need to do something. Jim is right. Anything.
Thank you. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We'll begin with our first caller.
The grand jury report says how to answer a recommendation, including detail on how it will be implemented, and a timeframe for implementing it not to exceed six months. Recommendation one lacks a timeline. The process should be that the county fire district would go to each other district, ask them whether they will consolidate, and report back. Some districts may be unaware of the procedure for consolidating, although it would be helpful for the county as a whole. This should be explored actively, and it not could be. Um, recommendation two says every three years, the San Diego County Consolidated Fire Code is updated. However, the recommendation is lead an effort with current, uh, fire protection districts to standardize defensible space requirements and controlled burn permitting, which it's very clear that this should not wait for a regular code update. The other answers was good, but you need to revise recommendations one and two. Um, it's, uh, actually a legal thing. Um, the, number three, the Teamsters stuff. The Teamsters refuse to pick up Sylvester's garbage in sympathy with the strike. Three thousand miles away in Boston, I do not think they deserve a penny more. Sylvestons don't know the details of what goes on in Boston, although I'm sure that many of them would have signed a-
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My voice is silent. I don't know why they don't stop you. You guys shouldn't be stopping people when their mic drops. That's messed up. Anyways, Consuelo. So, okay, while you sit in your filtered rooms talking about commissions and plans and families and Imperial Beach, especially, uh, the working class, they breathe their tox, they breathe toxic air, swim in contaminated water, and watch their property values and health decline. And this isn't about protecting the people. It's about protecting contracts, covering up failures, and quietly funneling taxpayer money toward bigger agendas that have nothing to do with the sovereignty or community well-being. You talk about climate, but you never, uh, but never about accountability. You talk about sustainability, but never about truth. What's really being sustained here is the illusion that you're doing something, but we see through the bureaucratic language and fake urgency. The longer this review process drags on, the more obvious it becomes, this is not about solving the problem, it's about managing the optics while normalizing unlivable conditions, conditioning us to accept less, and using it all to move forward with the same playbook that feeds a global agenda, not a local solution. The people of San Diego County deserve better than a polluted coastline and political theater. So enough delays, enough lies, fix it or step aside for the people who will. Done.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good morning. This is Kathleen Lippett. I would like to address the item one, the county's response to the grand jury report. I was unable to find it in a link, which should have been easy to find on your agenda. But I wanted to revisit that issue. The county did not report the non-financial costs of marijuana legalization, health, and law enforcement impacts, leaving citizens unaware of the full non-fiscal impacts of, of the city, the county's decision. Legalized cannabis has had a significant health impact on schoolchildren and senior citizens. And it was recommended that the county staff direct reports and respond to these, uh, health and law enforcement impacts. To our knowledge, that has not been done. Alex Berensen had created, had written a book six years ago called Tell Your Children. It came out to guffaws, basically, but it, but he has been exonerated with his recent books that identifies all of the signs that has accumulated since. The county is not doing a good job with drug enforcement. We have terrible drug addiction problems, abuse problems, and it is in large part because you are contributing to it with your ordinances and your failure to address prevention. Prevention was rolled into the Behavioral Health Services, but it seems like prevention went away to be taken over by mental, mental health, uh, instead, that focus on harm reduction. Harm reduction will never get at these problems. They will continue to escalate. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
The county can absolutely not be trusted. None of you can be trusted to make any sound-minded decisions when there is such egregious things happening in the county with children. You sit here and you guys want to give people raises, all while the services that you're pretending to provide are suffering, lacking, and in totally vacant. And it's so sad because it's like you, there is so much fraud going on with the county and children, that it is absolutely appalling for making any kind of decisions when you're not willing to mitigate what's going on with children. Children are being abused, not only by county workers, but by, um, the, the, um, whole CPS system, along with the judicial system that likes to, you know, strong-arm people, manipulate them, isolate them, make them, you know, basically, uh, so alienated that they cannot stand up for themselves, all while children are being sexually abused in the county and they're covering it up. So it's so interesting when, you know, there are, you know, moves being made to keep people out of things, because all it does is open up a can of worms you guys will never be able to close. So if you think that you guys want to keep people silent and have some kind of confidentiality when it has to do with children, fuck around and find out, because everything that you guys are doing in the child welfare system is going to be exposed on a massive scale. And there's nothing that you guys can do to stop it, but it, the whole entire system is going to be coming crashing down. And it's all because everyone wants to hide everything. So when you want to do that, it just proves that you are acting nefariously, you're engaged in abuse of children, and you're trying to cover it up. So welcome to hell, because you guys are about to find out what it looks like to have everything that you guys are doing exposed to everybody, and there are so many families in San Diego that are, you guys are torturing right now, and they're all going to be coming up to the surface.
Thank you. For the record, that speaker was allegedly audited. Hear from the next caller.
Item two, grand jury, Robert Gurman. Since 2023 to present, San Diego has had 19 fatal aviation fatalities. We are number one in the nation. San Diego airports, Montgomery Gibbs, and Gillespie are number one in the nation for lead emissions from their small general aviation aircraft because of their closeness to one another, just nine miles apart. How does the city and the county reward these tragic number-one ratings? The board signs a lease agreement with the biggest US airline, American Airlines. In 1978, PSA, now Southwest, was struck by a small flight-training Cessna aircraft. That mid-air collision killed 138 passengers. The FAA response was a directive that would be no flight training in Lindbergh airspace. By signing this lease agreement at Carlsbad Airport with American, you now have the same factors: small flight-training aircraft operating in a smaller airspace with large regional airliner operations, all because county of San Diego airports are underwater. County airports are trying to save their jobs and preserve their airport by putting pilots and passengers' lives at risk. I am requesting the new Board of Supervisors order the San Diego County Grand Jury to investigate County of San Diego airports and San Diego County Regional Airport Authority for the unsafe operations potentially fatal, uh, to the citizens of San Diego County. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
It's clear that you guys do not listen to the people or you care less about what we have to say, because we could take a look at the flood. The county is suing 11 people for the flood, even though they did not choose to clean out the water drain. They are blaming the citizens. Now, normally, you would be able to remove these people, but unfortunately, labor union, I mean, bunch of unions, go ahead and fill out fraudulent registration cards and use the homeless facilities to funnel them. That is why they set up mailboxes and all that stuff, so that they could go ahead and hide the election fraud. San Diego, even though Heritage Report goes ahead and shows the fact that registration voter fraud runs rampant, MS-13 tried committing 8,000 cases, but they were very stupid about it. They use the same social security number on most of the cards. Now, I don't think that, let's just say, these groups that go ahead and house our homeless, they have all their information, and I'm pretty sure that they could go ahead and fill out a registration card with all the proper information and get a ballot delivered to them, where they could go ahead and fill out over a thousand ballots and get the person they want elected, like, um, District One or Monica. It's clear and obvious that this is not the people's choice on choices, like, for example, Newsom. We had, what, 50% extra ballots, where people did not choose a secondary candidate on a life-and-death election, and our board members don't even want to go ahead and investigate it. Matter of fact, when they asked Cynthia about it, she says, "Hey, I see no evidence of it, so therefore it doesn't happen." Even though you could take a look at the Heritage Report and show that there's plenty of evidence of that taking place, and it has been taking place at an alarming rate over and over again, and the only way that, the only thing is that is protecting it is district attorneys that have been selected by Soros and ACLU to make sure that they could go ahead and continue-
For the record, that speaker was Gambler Hermes. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on the consent agenda.
Um, okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we have, um, a motion by Supervisor Montgomery Stepp, a second by Supervisor Desmond. Uh, Supervisor Desmond, did you have additional comments?
Yeah, I just had a clarifying, uh, position on item number three, to be consistent with my, uh, voting position on the overall budget, um, this, or the overall contracts, uh, earlier, that the one-time lump-sum payments that are contingent upon the county's reserve policy provides additional one-time funds. I voted against that, and I want to be consistent in saying I'm against that part of, uh, item three.
So are you looking to bifurcate your vote?
Well, that'd be nice, if you'd like to do that.
Or you just want to note for the record?
I just want to note it for the-
Okay. Noting for the record, um, so Supervisor Desmond is noting for the record that he's not in favor of the one-time payments that are included in the, uh, the compensation- that are included in the compensation ordinance on item three. Okay, thank you very much. With that, please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We now move to our discussion items. We will take the items in order, except for item eight, which will be heard last. The reason that item eight will be heard, excuse me?
Is that due to four?
Yeah, we're going to the discussion items, so that four will be first, yeah. So just want to share for people's situational awareness, we've moved item eight to the last item because we've just received a memo that addresses some of the questions. So I'm hoping my colleagues and I can have some time, possibly during our lunch break, to look at that memo so that when we do get to item eight, our questions can be a little bit more informed. So my colleagues and I can just sort of make sure to track down that memo, and we can all peruse it at lunch, so we can have a more productive conversation when we get to item eight. Great. So beginning with item four, I have a couple of comments, but I would first like to just turn it over to Supervisor Gary, who pulled this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's no surprise that the toxic sewage crisis impacting tens of thousands of residents of District One is one of my highest priorities and is one of the highest priorities of the people of District One. The people of District One are fairly tired. They're tired of having to breathe in toxic gases, including hydrogen sulfide, which are incredibly detrimental to people's health, especially the health of children. Just recently, there was a publication of the Assessment of Chemical Exposure Survey, the ACE Survey, which I'll go into in just a sec, but this is the 17th time this board has declared this a local emergency. And I think that as this crisis continues to worsen, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can in our power to address it. I just want to share with my colleagues a few statistics that were found by the ACE Survey. This survey collected information from nearly 2,100 respondents and found that 64% reported at least one new or worsening physical health symptom, which they attributed to the sewage crisis in the last 30 days. The most common were headaches, runny nose, congestion, and respiratory symptoms such as coughing and difficulty breathing. 28% of respondents had symptoms of anxiety. 24 had symptoms of depression. So this is having a significant impact on people's mental health as well. 31% of respondents sought out medical care because of the sewage crisis symptoms, of which a significant amount went to the emergency room for care. Additionally, results from the Community Assessment for Public Health Emergency Response Survey, or CASPER Survey, which assessed 189 households, they found that 81% reported that the health of their household was top concern, 77% believed their air quality in the area is not okay, 71% did not believe the tap water was safe to drink, and 67% had to buy bottled water as their primary source of drinking water. 70% reported disruptions in their household, including exercise, social activity, their sleeping schedule, and more. So I just want to have us reflect on all of these statistics. Exercise, social activity, and sleep are being disrupted. These are foundational aspects to a healthy life that are being impacted by the sewage crisis. So this is an important story that is not being told. So we must do better for the people of South Bay. Their concerns are valid. The science backs it up, and their suffering can no longer be ignored. So with that, I want to put forward an amendment to item four. I move that staff recommendation with the additional direction that when staff next forwards this proclamation to the state, it includes the following public documents, which the state can also forward to the federal government: a summary of the results of the Assessment of Chemical Exposures, or ACE, survey that I just mentioned, as well as a full report; a summary of the results of the Community Assessment for Public Health Emergency Response, or CASPER, survey; the findings of the County of San Diego's 2023 study on the economic impacts of transboundary pollution; and the following academic publications: Tijuana River Contamination from Urban Runoff and Sewage: A Public Health Crisis at the Border by Dr. Granados at AL; Heavily Polluted Tijuana River Drives Regional Air Quality Crisis by Dr. Granados and Dr. Prather at AL; Health Impacts in Residents Exposed to Tijuana River Pollution: A Community-Based Assessment of Environmental and Public Health Risks in the U.S.-Mexico Border Region by Dr. Granados at AL; and Low-Level Exposure to Hydrogen Sulfide: A Review of Emissions, Community Exposure, Health Effects, and Exposure Guidelines by Baderman at AL. As you can see, there's quite a number of scientific and empirical evidence that this crisis can no longer be ignored, so I hope I have the support of my colleagues on this. Thank you.
I'm happy to second the amendment. Thank you. I'd like just to make a couple of comments. I think, first, I just really want to thank Supervisor Gary for your fierce advocacy on this issue. I think the last few years, it's really been important to have your partnership in trying to at least begin some of the studies and work together on the task force that was able to begin providing some of the basis, the scientific basis, to really document the health impacts. You know, I think I really appreciate that you were a fierce champion of the Superfund side designation and that you've just been fighting on this for so long. You know, we, this is the 17th time we renewed this local emergency that I brought forward in 2023, and I just want to even note that even back then, you had come to us and to me and said, hey, we got to do this. And so this reflects your work over the last many, many years. And so I'm, we have to keep fighting, we have to keep fighting to fix our, the infrastructure and to treat with, like, the utmost urgency the health crisis that people in our community are dealing with every single day. And I know that folks in the South Bay, it's an immediate issue, but it extends all up and down the coastline. You know, my district goes from Coronado to Carlsbad, and of course, it impacts my community directly, very directly in Coronado, but in Carlsbad, it's the number-one issue on people's minds. So this is an all-of-San Diego issue, and I think we have to come together and make this a top priority, and I am just really happy to have you here to help lead that fight and make sure that this moves. So happy to second, and I hope that this can be the beginning of, like, a really concerted focus on the board. So thank you very much. Any other comments? Supervisor Desmond?
Well, thank you, Supervisor Gary. I appreciate your emphasis on this. I was wondering if you would accept, I guess, another amendment to your amendment. I appreciate yours, and I'll be supporting it, but that we also ask the state and federal government for, to study or look at potential consequences if we still continue to get the amount of sewage that we're getting via the Tijuana River continuing into the United States.
Sorry, as a second of the motion, I'm not at all clear of that.
Well, I guess the motion would, in addition to setting the surveys and setting the studies and sending the information to the state and federal government, that we also ask them to look into potential consequences if no action is taken by Mexico and we continue to get the sewage flow as it is today.
Through the chair, are those consequences?
I'm asking for potential consequences.
But are you referring to consequences, health consequences? Because that's what all of this empirical evidence is going to be.
No, consequences either monetarily or something to, you know, get Mexico's attention to increase their efforts to build up their infrastructure as well, as part of this solution.
Thank you. What I'm interested is having our state and federal government, who are responsible for all of us and our health, safety, and welfare, taking care of us first. So that's what I'm interested in. So thank you for suggesting the amendment. At this point, I'd like to move it forward the way it is.
Okay, well, I'm only, it's been 30 years, and I'd rather see heavier action, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments from my colleagues? Okay, we have a motion and a second? Oh, apologies. Thank you. Please, Andrew, call the public speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 14 requests to speak on this item, six in person and eight requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we did not receive any ecomments on this item. For any individuals that requested to speak on item four by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board. I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. We've been calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite for the following individuals: Caesar Javier, Truth, and Pam.
One minute. Caesar and Purita, you do not qualify as chair. Mamagiri, please give us a copy of your literature. You know, disband the air pollution control district. Let 13 people work with loose county. Let those hearing on the compliance adjustment on the permit and the, what you call citation in terms of money, let the county attorney's office, oh my God, let's organize land-reducing pollution, coastal reduction agency, water pollution reduction agency. We do not have that. Who is now responsible on those land contamination, et cetera, et cetera? Mam Reamer, you're not qualified as chair. You have no brain. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Truth. 16 proclamations for state emergency, and not a single thing has changed. Maybe Paloma's tired old line isn't working. I repeat what I said in Imperial Beach at the last council meeting that Paloma ran away from. The never-ending push for state emergency is like fetch, it's never going to happen. Anyone that's still wasting time talking about a state of emergency that everybody knows the president cannot declare without a governor's consent is either fooling themselves or trying to fool everyone else. Only the IB plan is a real solution, and yet Paloma was the lone no-vote on that item. Paloma studies will achieve nothing in that five-point plan to nowhere. The number-one source of sewage pollution is not the river, it's Mexico for 90 years. The solution is drawing a line in the IB sands. No more water to Mexico. Increase tariffs every day, there's a drop of sewage. No more border crossings during sewage spills. And if that sounds harsh, good. That's everything in your power. It's as harsh as it was to breathe in Mexico sewage during last summer. I've gotten sick a few times, Paloma. You don't even know that.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person: Rudy Hernandez, Mark, and Laurie Saldana.
Pam, so nothing new to report, right? Anybody with a brain knows that there are people experiencing adverse effects, physical, mental, if you want to include that, because this county likes to include mental health and everything, and studies have been done over and over and over again. $600 million have been awarded to fix something. But at this time, Paloma, you owe the people an explanation as to why you will not hold Mexico accountable for this. It's very blatant, it's very obvious. Where is your allegiance, Paloma? Nothing's going to be done. As Tara has liked to have said in the past, this is all theater, this is all theatrics, a lot of word, pretty words, look, I'm here to take care of you, I'll help you, but not really. You owe an explanation.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good morning. My name is Rudy. I am a resident of Imperial Beach, and I am also a county employee with SEIU 221. So I am a resident, and I do know what this pollution smells like, and I would very much rather not feel its effects in a few years due to the game of wait-and-see bureaucracy that we keep playing at every level. I am in support of a declaration of emergency, and I would also like consideration for my brothers and sisters who do work the front lines at the River Valley. I would like for them to be considered in the planning and communication once things have moved forward into addressing the issue at the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Laurie Saldana. Before I was elected to serve in the State Assembly, I was a research fellow at the UCSD Center for U.S.-Mexico Studies, and I published a journal article on environment and development on the infrastructure along the U.S.-Mexico border. Doing research, I was also living in Mexico at the time, we do have a toxicity issue as well as bacterial load issue, and the fact is, Mexico was willing to build their own treatment facility in Mexico until the U.S. government offered to build it in the United States. I was a plaintiff in a lawsuit when I was chair of the Sierra Club. We prevailed to have additional studies done on this treatment plant. So there has been decades of work on this, and we have known for decades that the plant as constructed now and the ocean outfall are insufficient. I encourage you to do more recent measurements. You can't improve what you don't measure. I would love to see industrial waste reports from Tijuana to understand the toxicity issues better. But Mexico did offer to build their own facility. The United States declined that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Well, just like we all knew, Paloma is going to do absolutely nothing to help this survey, another survey.
Can you please state your name?
Mark. And so what's really going on that Paloma is going to do, along with pretty much everybody here, the Republicans are just a little slower, doing Agenda 21, the UN, United Nations Agenda 21? People need to see this video to see what they're really going to do. And the transnational corporations these people are working for, really, not the people. They don't give a damn about us or our health, especially a really poor area like San Ysidro or anybody anywhere near there. So people need to see this Rosacori video, and from 3 minutes 30 seconds. Oh, by the way, this one, at 1 minute, excuse me, 1 hour 15 minutes, Mal Jabi, who was at the forefront of digital development in Silicon Valley for 25 years, tells you about them doing facial recognition with our phones on us. That's what they're really doing.
Thank you. Well, now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
All aboard. The situation is a crisis, but declaring and then continuing a local state of emergency outside, but that should be only done if the county actually has a publicly articulated program to fix the problem. You've already sent a letter, but no actual plan to fix anything soon and reopen beaches and stop the drin on business. Good on you for your small part in getting $600 million for the wastewater treatment in a few years, but after 35 years, most people need to fix now. Why haven't you got handheld pollution monitors to zero in on air pollution? It would be a lot quicker, maybe save a few lives. Will we wait for 2025 funding, pass fruitless letters and unanswered resolutions? Will we keep?
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Bone Swallow, all by design, Paul. Okay, here we are again, talking about the TJ River. This should have been solved decades ago. Let that begin, decades, decades. How many meetings? How many millions? How many promises? And yet, here we are, still talking, still sick, still paying the price. Do not eat that in the room, please. And Jim Desmond, you've been in this game long enough to know how it works, but you still sit up there pretending like you're waiting for some new magic solution from someone with no power. You act like you want results, but you know damn well this board was never designed to deliver real solutions, only to maintain the illusion that something's being done. Meanwhile, people are getting poisoned, people are losing their health, their homes, their lands, and all we get is talk, 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 while we pay, 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 and get sick, sick, sick. That's the cycle. Let's just be real for a moment. Let's be off.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Kevin Stevenson, I would like to thank Supervisor Agiti for putting this item forward. Congratulations, by the way. And I would like to translate what potential consequences mean, because I speak the language of Republican politician looking to cozy up to the likes of Mike Johnson, Steve Scalise, Jim Jordan, and others in Congress. Essentially, what Jim Desmond wants to do is use potential consequences as a campaign thing for his congressional run in 2026 and tander to a bunch of racist idiots who think ooh. and tander to a bunch of racist idiots who think, ooh, scary brown people over the border. Oh, we gotta do something about them. They're so mean to us. It's really gross, xenophobic, racist, disgusting. That's basically what it is. So I'm glad that Agiri is not taking the bait on that. I think this item should go forward as...
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hey, Paloma, how much is Mexico paying you to, you know, just keep things, you know, as per the usual, you know, just continue to toxify the people? Like, I mean, what did you, are you gonna get a car, maybe some children to traffic? I'm wondering if that's what you're, you know, gonna be trading for, you know, just for you to sit and do nothing. It's so funny. You're like already showing the people how you're gonna act. No, I don't want to add that to my item. I would like to keep it the way it is and make sure that we don't do anything for the next 30 years as well, and that we just let the people sit there and stew in the cyanide and just test them. Let's test them and see if they get more eyeballs, or, you know, maybe they'll be infertile, or, you know, who knows, maybe they'll just die and you guys can take their kids. You guys seem to love to take children from loving families. And I'm sure there's a lot down there in IB that you guys can, you know, really rip apart, because, I mean, that's the name of the game. But it's so interesting, Paloma, I'm just wondering, like, you know, is it, you know, millions? Is it, you know, what else? There could be a car, you know?
For the record, the speaker was allegedly audra. Hear from the next caller.
With all the money that you spent researching the problem, you could have just built a new facility, but that isn't the goal. The goal is basically reduce the price of property so that corporations could buy it and build your locations to help out American citizens. But the way that we've been focusing all our money is giving it to illegals. That is probably why we have 80% citizens homeless, only like, what, 20% migrants? So you clearly support the migrants and do not support the people, and you want to take the people's property and give it to corporations where they could go ahead and be slum lords and give you the money back. It's a great system, but, you know, the thing is that it looks like a...
For the record, the speaker is Gambler Hermes. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hi, my name is Andrea Ebbing, and I'm wondering why no one is looking at our district attorney, Summer Stefan, who accepted a $25,000 donation from the San Diego Infrastructure PAC on May 27, 2025, in a filing which had so many STPC violations, it's not even funny. Complete conflict of interest, federal judge Dana Sabrow. Both of these people have the authority and ability to move things forward, but instead, Summer Stefan spent her time pouting retail bills and shopping Walmart aisles with a pulpit and a camera crew, race and class dating, trying to get some people to like her because she was not elected into office. She's our primary problem in San Diego. She's the head of a Rico enterprise that's operating and causing these crises through paybacks, kickbacks, and spent $10 million to perpetuate our opioid distribution problem for body brokering rehab kickbacks instead of helping the community. That could have contoured...
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion by Supervisor Agiri, second by myself. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We now move on to discussion item six, selection of Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair Pro Tem of the 2025 Board of Supervisors. I'll turn to our clerk of the board, Andrew, to review the process.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. The Board of Supervisors' rules and procedure dictate the process for selection of the board's officers. The rule specifies that the officers of the board are the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Chair Pro Tem. The method of nomination and selection of Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair Pro Tem will be the discretion of the board. The board may solicit nominations for the Chair or for a slate of Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair Pro Tem. Any nomination must have a second, and if the person nominated declines the position, the nomination will be withdrawn. Upon successful election of a Chair, the balance of the meeting or the nomination for Vice Chair, if no slate of officers was elected, will be conducted by the incoming Chair. Be appropriate to consider a nomination for Chair or a slate that includes Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll begin with public comment, and then we'll turn to the board for nominations and conversation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We have 17 requests to speak on this item, six in person, 11 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received two ecomments, one in support and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item six by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. Again, as your name is called, please come forward and stand in the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium, because there are 10 more speakers on the side, and you have 1 minute to address the board. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll call you in groups of three, so again, please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals: Caesar Javier, Truth, and Pam. Again, you have 1 minute to address the board.
Caesar and Purita, you know, we need leaders. We are willing to be your followers. And in our participation in the county's public meetings, Reamer is not qualified. The new supervisor not qualified. So much so with Steve, so much so with Anderson. Who else? We approached them, and they said, sorry, Caesar, I cannot help you. That is not the kind of leader that we want. Madam Speed, you are spreading the political virus here in the county. You are the Chair of Education for the elementary school teachers, or, I mean, education. What are you going to teach to these children? Hate? Disrespect?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Pam, not in favor of any woman on this board for the position of Chair because of the progressive agenda you promote. So based on that agenda, especially as it pertains to children, these are my reasons for no. Your love of child sacrifice by abortion, define women to include those individuals born with a penis, provide privileged position for boys and men pretending to be female to gain free, easy access into women's and girls' sports and spaces, desire children to be sexualized and deceived in school, promote the surgical mutilation and medical castration of minor children to satisfy the fetishes of sick adults, endorse schools and adults keeping secrets from parents and lying to vulnerable children, undermine parental rights, destroy the family unit, and separate children from their parents. The progressive agenda dangerously threatens life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Therefore, none of you should be in the Chair position.
Next speaker, please. I'd like to invite forward the remaining three speakers in person as the next speaker is going forward: Michael Brando, Mark, and Crystal Irving.
Mark, so 1 minute isn't enough time according to the Brown Act, which shows you how little they care. As far as them selecting a Chair, Vice Chair, and Pro Tem, of course, it'll probably be Tara as Chair. Vice Chair will probably be Paloma, although you would think it would be Montgomery Step. And Joel, they have to have a Ryanair in there to make it look good. So he'll be the Pro Tem. You need to see these videos to understand what's really going on. These people are all being selected to do United Nations Agenda 21. It's a fact, it's real. You can see a California expert court witness, Rosa Corre, and she talks about this. Here's some times. Also, you can see Klaus Schwab, in 1 minute, it's a minute long, saying that he's got young global leaders infiltrating governments, including Nathan Fletcher, who was the Chair here before. And Newsom, our governor, is a young global leader for the World Economic Forum. Does not serve our interests. That's what they're...
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
Hi, it's Truth. You know, it's too bad it wasn't 2 minutes, because I was actually gonna say something nice about Tara, but nope, cut. My mother said, Joel and Jim, from now on, you guys could just stay home. I said, they could have been staying home for the last 5 years. It doesn't matter who runs it. When corrupt Nathan Fletcher and Lorena's been pulling the strings from afar the whole time. Didn't matter when vanishing Nora Vargas was here, and it doesn't matter if TDS Tara's here. But I know Tara's been drooling for this moment, yet she remains unqualified to even be in office at all. She's proven herself a spoiled brat who rolls her eyes, yells at meetings to the point that I called her Tara Thunberg, and is generally very intolerant of opposing opinions. For Paloma, man, she has failed to rep IB. She couldn't even show up to local events when she allegedly lives in the city. Why is she late? Why does she no-show? I don't know. Paloma even once claimed a council member had cooties. All lies. As always for the last 5 years, we are absolutely doomed. And by the way, commies, commies, they don't surf. I don't know if you guys have heard that. It's just too bad. There's no solutions.
Next speaker, please.
All right. Good morning, everyone. My name is Crystal Irving, so proud to serve as President of SEIU Local 221, representing over 14,000 workers in San Diego and Imperial Counties. Congratulations Supervisor Paloma Agiri, and welcome to your first day as a county supervisor. It's truly a new day for South Bay and a new day for the county of San Diego. And I'm here speaking in favor of Supervisor Tara Lawson Reamer serving as Chair of the board, Supervisor Monica Montgomery Step serving as Vice Chair of the board, and our newly sworn-in Supervisor Paloma Agiri as Chair Pro Tem for the County of San Diego Board of Supervisors. I also want to take a moment to thank Acting Chair Lawson Reamer for keeping things rolling during a time of real uncertainty for our county. And now it's time to make her leadership official and move our county forward. We've been able to accomplish a lot of amazing things in this county, and we have a ways to go to truly win for the working families that we serve and represent. And I'm looking forward to building on those victories that we've won. And we'll do this all under the leadership of these amazing women. Thank you.
Thank you. Final call for Michael Brando. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We will begin with our first caller.
In the election results item, you didn't really announce the winner. Hope you do better here. Whoever you choose, your primary mission should be to restore trust. Tara doesn't, by the way, she doesn't necessarily call routine items like approval of the minutes or speakers at the correct time, so I don't know if she even wants to be Chair. Cutting off speakers' last sentences, calling people off topic when they're not, pushing agenda items to the next day when many speakers can't be there simply makes them angrier. The ones I did push to and try and half-baked ideas in the county's ordinances as if they mean so much in the scheme of things destroys trust. Public service should be nonpartisan, serving people, not parties. A great time to listen to the people, good idea.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Bon swallow. Before you vote on who will lead this board, ask yourselves, what exactly are you leading? You open up these meetings reciting county's values. You honor indigenous people and acknowledge the land as if that means something, as if you're not still upholding systems that continue the very same injustice. That's not respect, that's bullshit. A nice little script to read before carrying on with the same extractive, colonizing, anti-human policies. Performative compassion while the machine keeps rolling. Meanwhile, families cry at the podium over loved ones dying on the street like garbage. Mothers and fathers beg for help, and you sit there, blank face, cutting them off, dismissing them as if off-topic, pushing real concerns to another day, a day that never seems to come. Apathy, what is it, cowardice? Or are you just some kind of spell?
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Kevin Stevenson, I would definitely support the idea of Tara Lawson Reamer serving as Chair, Monica Montgomery Step serving as Vice Chair, and then Paloma Agiri serving as Pro Tem, because I personally feel that they are the most suited to guide San Diego County through this tough moment that we're currently living under. We cannot afford to waste our time treating people who are anti-reproductive rights in favor of illegal mass deportations and other general insanity like controlling our kids and outlawing being trans and other crap like that. We cannot allow these people to control the discourse. We cannot allow them to rule over us all. We need to fight back, and we need to steer the ship. So I am definitely in favor of Tara, Monica, and Paloma being Chair.
Thank you. We will hear from the next caller.
My name is Kathleen Lippett. It has been really challenging for San Diego County residents who have been harmed by what seems to be nothing more than an ideological echo chamber. Defending opinions are not welcome. Individuals from opposite parties are not welcome. But no one, not least leaders, benefits from the failure to listen to diverse or opinions of opposition. What ultimately happens is that they remain uninformed, and it does not serve the people. It is time that the Board of Supervisors paid respect to those individuals who do not agree with their political agendas. Their voices need to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Madison. As you consider leadership nominations, I urge you to choose individuals who are not only fiscally responsible, but who also deeply prioritize public health and safety. These are the core issues that shape the daily lives of San Diego County residents. We need leaders who understand that being careful with taxpayer dollars doesn't mean cutting corners. It means making smart, strategic investments in things like mental health services, emergency response, affordable housing, and preventative public health efforts. These investments don't just save lives, they also save money over time. With rising cost of living, ongoing public health challenges, and increasing demands on our safety net systems, the stakes are high. The people chosen to lead this board set the tone for how we meet those challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
You know, it's gonna be the Jezebells, the three little Jesuits up there, you know, that are gonna try and take over San Diego, you know, shove it right into the pits of hell. Actually, we are in hell. I know how you can shove it into hell when you're already there, boy, it smells like sulfur. But yeah, so Tara, you're gonna continue to be Chair and self-implode. It's gonna be great. And then Monica is gonna back you up in that as Vice Chair. It's gonna be, you know, more of the same. And then you got Paloma coming in, because she's so fantastic, and she won. She wasn't just put in there, right? And so she's going to be the Pro Tem. And you ladies are going to continue to send, you know, children into the arms of predators. You're going to do everything in your power to make sure children suffer. So it's gonna be good. It'll be interesting, because you guys are going to be the makers of your own demise. So it's gonna be fun to watch. I'm really looking forward to it. I'm not sure how long it's gonna take, but, you know, tick-tock, 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 tick-tock. You're going to hell for what you...
Thank you. For the record, that speaker was allegedly audra. We'll hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Becky Raff, and I'm here to respectfully urge this board to appoint Supervisor Jim Desmond as the next Chair. Supervisor Desmond brings a much-needed voice and perspective from San Diego's unincorporated communities, areas that are too often overlooked in county-wide decisions. Time and time again, policies are made about these rural and suburban areas without meaningful representation or understanding of the unique challenges they face. representation or understanding of the unique challenges they face. Whether it's land use, wildfire safety, infrastructure, or public health, the unincorporated regions deserve equity in leadership, not just in words, but in action. Appointing someone like Supervisor Desmond would send a strong signal that the board values all of San Diego County, not just the incorporated cities, and is ready to lead with fairness and inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hey, how you guys doing? This could not go any more perfect than I can imagine. I agree with Kevin and the union. I definitely think that all three of you women should be in charge of San Diego. And I think you should go ahead and fight Donald Trump every single step of the way. I hope that you give him as much hell as humanly possible. I hope that you go ahead and ignore everything that Jim Desmond says, because I want, more than anything, when he discovers election fraud coming through the registration process, that he uses me to throw your asses in jail, because there is no excuse that you guys could give saying that you do not know anything about this. There is no excuse that you could give that says that you do not know every single detail. I mean, hell, look at the last couple of reports that I've taken. There is no way that you could go ahead-
Thank you. For the record, that speaker was Gambler Hermes. We'll hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. This is Ann Riddle. I called in because I appreciate this opportunity to share my thoughts regarding the selection of chair, vice chair, and chair pro tem of our new 2025 Board of Supervisors, and to thank Tara Lawson Reamer for her past service in navigating these last many months. I'd like to remind us that, I guess we would call it the olden days, we had a rotation of chair so that all the unincorporated areas, or all the areas of the county, would have an opportunity to be represented. We've had a long history of these last couple of years of just having primarily the incorporated city areas of our county represented. And I think it's time now that the chair be either Desmond or Anderson, who more represent the unincorporated areas of the county. Here's-
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Montgomery Stepp.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all the members of the public who came out to speak on this item. We finally have a full board, so we can hopefully make a clear decision today. So I'd like to nominate a slate. I would like to nominate as chair Tara Lawson Reamer, myself as vice chair, and as chair pro tem Paloma Aguirre. That is my nomination. Thank you.
I'll second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery Stepp, a second by Supervisor Aguirre. I'll make a couple of comments, and I think if my colleagues have anything else to add. I just appreciate your partnership, your leadership, and your trust and your faith. And I think every member of this board brings a real commitment to public service. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished together, even over the last six months in passing a unanimous budget, which I think shows what we can achieve when we come together to fight for the things that matter for our region. And I'm very much looking forward to what we can do moving forward now that we have a full board and we can really work hard and focus on advancing the major priorities of the people of San Diego County, fighting for our constituents, and delivering on the agenda for the folks that sent us here and entrusted us with their leadership. I think of this as a very pivotal moment for our region. Families across San Diego County are counting on us to really build a force field around our region to protect people's rights and our quality of life, especially as sort of dysfunction outside of our county and other levels of government continues to escalate. I think our county has shown time and again that local government can work, that we can lead with fairness and common sense and practical solutions. I think as we now have a full board, with every district represented and everyone in our region having a voice, we're going to be able to do so much more for the people in our community. So I just wanted to say very grateful for your confidence. Also want to take a moment to comment on you, Supervisor Montgomery Stepp. I just think you have stepped into this world on this board with such vision and such clarity. And I think you have stepped in at a really difficult time. And what you've brought to this board over the last 18 months has been really extraordinary. And so continuing to, so looking forward to continuing to see you lead here. So thank you. And I've already said lots of nice things about Supervisor Aguirre today. But I think I just hope that we can continue to working together. So thank you very much. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. I guess you're still the vice chair. Okay. I'm not going to be voting in favor of the motion. District 5, North County, has not held the chair or vice chair position for over four years. The large unincorporated districts have been underrepresented in the leadership positions at this board, particularly Districts 5 and 2. We are the main representatives of the huge and vastly large unincorporated areas, and we serve as their local government representative. They have not had a chair in representation in over five years. So for that reason, I think the people of the unincorporated areas also have to have people rotate, at least through the chair and vice chair positions, for a fair and better representative government. So I'll be voting against the motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone else? Okay. We can go ahead and take a vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes with Supervisor Desmond voting no, and Supervisor Anderson abstaining, all of the supervisors being present, and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We're moving on to Item 7. This is Appointment of Board Members to Boards, Commissions, and Committees. We will begin with public comment. And let me just note for my colleagues, given the time, it's 12:30. We will get through this item, and then we'll take a break for lunch. So I want to make sure folks know what's coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 12 requests to speak on this item, three in person, and nine requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record that we received one e-comment that was neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on Item 7 by phone, please dial in the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you'll have one minute to address the board. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals in person: Cesar Javier, Truth, and Mark.
Truth, Paloma cannot be appointed to anything at Sandag or MTS. She took a campaign donation from Soviet dictator Hassan Krata. She is a slave to the political unions, having gotten $21,500 in bribes, I mean, campaign donations from the Building Construction Trades Council, which has been monopolizing project agreements at both Sandag and MTS, as well as openly trying to control the Sandag Board. Both agencies have wasted billions of our taxpayers on projects that have harmed this county while benefiting only the political unions who funnel that money to candidates who will be their slave to keep making them rich. Paloma, on the Transit Taxpayer Oversight Committee, when she can't even pay her own taxes, are you serious with that? Paloma, Air Pollution Control, she's going to pick up where Nora left off with useless studies and air purifiers. Notice that Paloma will be getting five stipends. That's at least an extra $750 to her bankroll. I guess she needs it. Note that Jim's only on seven out of 44 boards, committees, and commissions. Very disrespectful. And the only positive of having Paloma monopolizing Sandag is that she's going to have to see me at least every two weeks, if not more. That's going to be fun. I can't wait. Talk about you on Friday.
Thank you.
Mark, this is the most perfect example in your face of Agenda 21 happening right now. As soon as they got a Democratic majority, the people they're appointing, National Association of Counties is Montgomery Stepp and Lawson Reamer. That's 40,000 county elected officials, 3.6 million county employees. They were not elected to control the country and set policy, but they are. California State Association of Counties, California's 58 counties they'll be setting policy for, says CSAC drives effective policies. Oh, moving on, there's Sandag, Association of Governments. That's Aguirre and Anderson, the rhino here, who also went to the, is going or went to the low-income housing thing in Europe. Such bullshit. And the Borders Committee, which is a binational organization-
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Final call for Cesar Javier. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
The candidates should ensure as far as possible that it is represented on all three boards all of the time. Paloma Aguirre has an alternate at Glasgow. Joel deserves an alternate, too. For some reason, both are unable to attend. We should have an alternate for both. Now, public service should be nonpartisan, serving people, not parties. Too many votes around here are Democrat versus Republican. And people in various areas feel unrepresented. It's not a good situation. And as I keep suggesting, public trust in the supervisors is waning. A great time to listen to the people, but good ideas from both sides, promoted.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Kathleen Lipit. I hope that we can continue working together. That seemed to be a reference to the successful board majority's monopoly decisions. Supervisor Desmond's comment was a sad commentary on the board's decision to disenfranchise those who might interfere with the agenda set by this board majority. There was a time when supervisors represented their communities, and it wasn't clear what party they came from. That could not be further from the truth today. And Supervisor Desmond's comment about the unincorporated county, that's over 51% of the county, is unincorporated, and they do not have a voice. With every action the county takes, it seems to silence them further. It needs to be a fair process. This is a very unfair process not to rotate chairs as they once did.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Of course, you guys have to incestuously be on other boards, because it's the only way to keep the agenda going, right? You can't have any, like, you know, wrenching your plans, any, you know, link in the chain that's like missing so that, you know, somebody comes in and ruins what you guys are trying to do, which is totally enslaver everybody. And so good thing Paloma's here, so you guys continue down that path, you little Jezebels. Satan is so proud of you guys. I mean, he is just like, I have a special place in hell for you guys. It is so hot and warm and just real toasty. You guys could toast marshmallows. You might be the marshmallow that's toasted. But yeah, I mean, so basically, it'll be interesting to see what you do on Sandag, Paloma. Are you going to pretend to fix the issues down in IB that you were, you know, ignoring forever? So funny to see what you guys do to like really, you know, pretend that you're doing something so people just believe it. Oh, but yeah, it's going to be interesting to see you guys here in a little bit, because the county is royally fucking up, and you guys are going to regret every moment of it. It's going to be fun.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item. I also would like to note that we did receive an errata on this item. It made two corrections to attachment A. One was to remove the word "alternate" from the appointment of the San Diego County Air Pollution Control District, since the county is required to have two supervisors on that board. Also corrected to add an appointment to the Continuum of Care Board.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Desmond.
Madam Chair, I'm going to be voting against this item today. Four years ago, when I was the incoming vice chair, my constituents were stripped of about 90% of our committee assignments. District 5 and North County are completely underrepresented on these regional committees. We represent 20% of the population of this region and have the largest landmass of any district, but North County is silenced and unrepresented. These boards and committees make critical decisions that directly impact our infrastructure, transportation, water supply, and the daily lives of North County families. What this does is leaves North County, District 5, voiceless in decisions that we made on our future. I won't be supporting this item.
Any other comments from any of my colleagues? Okay. I'll move on. I'll second. Okay. We have a motion from Supervisor Montgomery Stepp, and a second from Supervisor Aguirre. Please vote.
And Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes with Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present, and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to take a break now for lunch. We'll come back at 1:30. Okay? Thank you. If I can, please read that memo at lunch.
Board is in recess until 1:30 this afternoon. Thank you.[1744.83]